School committee meeting for Wednesday, November eighteenth. I'm gonna call the meeting to order right at seven o'clock. We're gonna skip over the pledge of allegiance. We don't think we have a student representative.
Not today.
Um, I'm gonna move public comment and communications to after. When Mr. Dr. Vera speaks because I think he'll answer some questions and maybe change some comments.
Lisa, I think Will Champagne's here as a student rep.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, I am here.
Oh, wow.
Will Champagne in high school.
Alright, well, uh, this isn't how I was hoping to see everyone tonight, but good evening.
Hey, Will.
Uh, so.
Nice.
Uh, well, everyone, the students are sad and stressed right now that school is closed down. I'm sure everyone else is, so. Hopefully, the two weeks is all we need and we'll be back into the school. But, uh, as of right now, the freshmen have their class elections in two weeks. Uh, we tried to have a. Uh, spirit week this week and didn't work out because school is closed, but. Again, once school opens up again, we'll be getting going on that. Uh, we had the first meeting with the connections group, which is working on making the school more. Uh, welcome to students despite their differences. Uh, yearbook's trying to get in photos for DHS. And there is a shortage of activities right now, but if anyone gets pictures, we can send them to Mrs. Costa. Uh, the counseling department is planting their annual holiday giving tree. Uh, to help families in the community with their Christmas. And the NHS induction will be coming up, which we're currently working on scheduling right now. And hopefully it can be, uh, in person in the school when that opens back up. Also, just to add, uh, everyone's working away on college applications and. I know some of my friends have already got accepted to some places, so it's starting to get wrapped up, so.
Good, glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Will? Thank you, Will.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Will. Appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Moving on, does anybody have any old business that is not related to COVID? Any new business not related to COVID? Seeing none, I'm gonna throw in something here before I hand it over to Dr. Vera. One, there will be two seats on the school committee. For May, so since we have an audience, I'm getting that out there. Um, the town hall can help you with getting what you need to get done for that. And before I hand it over to Dr. Vera. I'm gonna speak a little bit on the school community behalf and I'll let them speak too. Um, when we started this, we. Our goal was to get the kids in school for about two weeks or at least get the cohorts through. Once or twice or three times. Um, to say that we've exceeded that is. I'm pretty proud of that. Um, but we couldn't have done it without Dr. Vera. The entire administration, all the teachers, the staff, the ABAs, the support staff. Mr. Klutz's department especially, the nurses, the town nurse, the board of health. You all kept all the kids safe as long as we possibly could. And I just want you to know the town's appreciative, the school committee is appreciative, and if. Anybody wants to add anything, knows the time. Kelly?
Well, I mean. We still feel that way. It's not like we're saying this is it, we're all done, but.
No.
We'll always appreciate everybody, even right now.
But to you, just to get to this point, we did not think we were gonna make it past a few weeks, so. I hope this isn't gonna be an extended period of time, but. Thank you all for being so flexible. If anyone else from the school committee. Has anything?
I, I would just add that yes, it's been, it's been an impressive feat to get to where we are and the amount of work that the. Teacher, staff, admins, and Dr. Vera have put in is amazing. Um, and I know that no matter what we do, not everybody will be happy. Because it's impossible to make everybody happy. I only have three kids and I can't make them all happy on the same day. But. We're doing what we. The interest of the students and the community is always put first. And our staff has really shown that that is what they hold as most important as well, so. We appreciate you. I'm gonna mute before the dog sings.
Anyone else?
No seconds. I just feel the same way everybody's already said, so thank you, thank you, everybody.
Okay, handing it over to Dr. Vera.
Alright, Donna Susan, can you let people in while I present so I don't have to do both? Alright.
Hello.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, again, just wanna echo off. Um, what the school committee said, of how absolutely proud I am of the leadership team, the teachers, the students, and the community. Um, like we said, I thought we were gonna make it two weeks. We started school. Um, September sixteenth, it's now November eighteenth. We made it two months and two days. Um, before this week, we'd only had three positive cases that were associated with the Douglas Public Schools. And those cases were not contacted or handled within the school district, so. I truly believe that the safety protocols we put in place and we worked so hard over the summer to, to put in place. Is what's helped keep, um, our students and our staff safe. Uh, I think the vigilance of our staff implementing these safety protocols, the cooperative nature of our, our students. The hard work of the administrative team has got us to this point today. Um, to say it was, um, just one person that did this is not true. We couldn't have done it without anyone and like. Um, Mr. Brown said, I'm very, very proud, um, to be part of this team and part of the community and again. We've done incredible work, um, to keep people safe and to make it to, um, two months and two days with only two incidents. Um, this week's been a busy week. Um, again, I need to thank, um, the administrative team for their help and support. Um, putting together this plan and examining everything, but a huge shout out to, um, our four nurses. Who worked with us and, um, Douglas Board of Health. They've been with us, they've been supportive, they've been providing us information. Um, they've been walking us through the process, so it's not an easy one, but thank you to the admin team, the nurses, and the board of health. For the past few days helping out. Um. Like to share a little bit of information about the four cases for you to understand, um, what has occurred and the information that we have. Um, I'm also gonna say that a lot of the information that I'm gonna present is somewhat vague. And it needs to be vague in order to protect the privacy of the individuals. It'll still paint a picture of what we know. But it also needs to be vague. Um, one thing that was going through the superintendent's list, listserv. And what one superintendent referred to as COVID shaming. And you can't point fingers a- at any one of these people or any one of these cases for what happened. Um, this is a pandemic that's gone across, you know, not only your community. Um, but the Commonwealth, the nation, and the world. So I really don't want people to point fingers and say the reason we're doing this is because one person didn't wear a mask or because one person. Didn't do this. Um, it happens. Um, it's occurred in our community across the world, so. Again, I'm gonna try to be vague with these situations and I hope the people understand that and respect the privacy of, of the individuals. Um, our first case I found out about on Monday, and this case represented five members of our school community. I'm using the word "school community" to define students, faculty, and/or staff. Um, after meeting with the nurses and, um, meeting with the board of health and with our admin team. Based off of the information we had and the knowledge we had and the particulars of the case. Uh, we determined these people to be presumptive positive. Um, just wanna clarify the presumptive positive case. Uh, and, and the verbiage around that, we should have used that as, um. Presumptive positive usually assumes that a person has been tested. These people were not tested, should have used the term likely positive. Um, went with the term presumptive positive, I apologize, that created any confusion. But, um, all of the, many of these individuals were experiencing COVID-like symptoms. Um, and they had all been in contact with the COVID positive person. The COVID positive person and this contact did not occur in school. Um, when we looked at the individuals, we found out that two of them were in the primary school. One of them in the elementary, one at the high school, and one fully remote. We started our contact tracing and we looked at classrooms, we looked at buses, we looked at the cafeteria. And once we concluded, um, we found out that there were nineteen members of the school community that had to quarantine. Um, our concern when we looked at this was that. If any one of these presumptive positive cases became positive. Now these nineteen, um, people become direct contacts and they would need to quarantine and then. Anyone associated with these nineteen people, they would then become close contacts and this could spiral, um, quickly, um, out of control. Um, as of Monday, these five individuals were considered presumptive positive. Today, we received word that three of the individuals have tested positive and two of the individuals have tested negative. So three of the five are indeed positive. The second case, we started investigating late Sunday night, but more information came through Monday, early in the morning, and then Monday throughout the day. It was three members of the school community that were in direct contact with a COVID positive case. Again, this contact in this individual did not occur in school. Uh, we met, we did our contact tracing, and we were able to contain it to the three members of the high school community. And, um, we didn't have, um, any close contacts. When I left work around four, four thirty on Monday, we felt we had a good plan for the first two cases. And we felt that we had it under control and, and maintained. Monday at approximately six o'clock at night, I was made aware of six members of the school community. Who came in contact with a COVID positive case. Again, this did not. Uh, happened in school. Some of the individuals are symptomatic, were symptomatic at the time. And we saw it spread across all of our buildings. At the primary, two at the elementary, two at the middle, and one at the high school. One of the big reasons I decided to close school on Tuesday was that we needed time. To investigate the situation and to do our contact tracing. Again, we had to look at buses, we had to look at seating charts, we had to look at cafeteria. And we needed time to dive into that. Um, once we did our contact tracing and we looked into things. We found out there were twenty-five members of the school community that were close contacts in the situation. To date, one of the six members, um, has been tested and that test has come back negative. Um, there are people who are symptomatic in that, um, in that cohort. And then finally, on Monday night at eight o'clock, I made aware, was made aware of a social gathering, um, that occurred. Where social distancing and masks may not have been worn. Um, the individual who was positive at the social gathering was not associated with, with the test, uh, with, with the school. Um, but based on the information we gathered with people, direct knowledge of, of the incident. We felt it only involved three school members and they did not have any close contacts. Again, I knew that, I found out about the event late Friday, um, Monday night, but we needed Tuesday to investigate. Based off of the information we had on. Tuesday, based off of the potential contacts, based off of the fact that these contacts involved students and staff. Based off of the particulars we knew of each of the, um, situations. I made the decision to close the Douglas Public Schools for fourteen days to allow for the situation to clear. Monday was considered day zero, so if you go fourteen days, that brings us back to school on Tuesday, December first, twenty twenty. Um, we've also seen, if you look at both state and local data, we've seen a spike in the data in the past two weeks. A total positive cases in Doug, in Massachusetts have doubled. A percent positivity in Douglas has doubled. Our total cases in Douglas have doubled. As I said in the letter, your help is critical in helping us stay open. Um, I ask the people over the next two weeks, especially with Thanksgiving coming up next week, especially with college kids coming, coming back. That twenty to twenty-nine age demographic is a huge spike, um, of, of positive cases. I ask that people follow the governor's recommendations along with proper social distancing, mask wearing, and hand hygiene. When these are followed, they work, they help slow the spread, they help keep people and communities safe. What I said is that if the numbers continue to trend in the current direction. We will have to stay closed and remain in the remote model through Tuesday, January, um, nineteenth, twenty twenty. Why so far ahead? And that's a question that's, that's been asked. We're supposed to come back on December first. We need to see what happens after the Thanksgiving Day break with a spike. People need, the virus takes four to five days to, after you're infected in order to. Come into your body and for people to start showing symptoms. That can take longer than sometimes than four to five days. So if you worry about Thanksgiving as a potential massive spread, you're looking now at December tenth, eleventh, twelfth. To bring kids back for, um, a week and then shut back down for Christmas vacation, does it make sense? Um, if you look at Tuesday, the nineteenth, that's exactly two weeks after. After New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. So if we see a spike at Thanksgiving and we see a spike at Christmas and we see a spike on New Year's Eve. If we wait for the fourteen days, that brings us to January nineteenth. I'm gonna be looking at the data this week and next week, and we'll make a decision and announcement on Saturday, the twenty eighth. Again, my hope is that, um, people follow these safety protocols and, um, we can indeed stay open. Couple other pieces of information, then open it up to questions from, from the committee and then for public comment. Um, just for people to know that we reached out to many of the close contacts associated with these situations. And to date, we've received a couple of emails and phone calls from families and from people who are close contacts. Who have gone from being asymptomatic to now being symptomatic. Um, so I'm glad we were able to reach out and have those people, um, quarantine and, and stay safe. Um, the other thing that I just wanna announce is that earlier in the year. We applied to be part of phase one of a rapid point of COVID, um, testing. Um, I found out on Monday that, um, we've been accepted into phase one of this. What this does is it allows for school personnel to administer COVID tests to students and staff. Who are showing symptoms, who are symptomatic. Um, I received this email late Monday. I really haven't dove too deeply into it. There's a lengthy checklist that we need to go through of next steps, and I'll start looking at that over the next few days, but. We did apply to be part of that phase one of rapid point of care COVID testing. Um, and as I dive into that and go through the checklist of what we need to do. To move into the next phase of it and to start bringing those tests to the school so we can test symptomatic kids and staff. Um, I'll share that with the community, so I just wanted to share that as a last piece of my report. Um, for the teachers who are on here, very similar to what I shared out yesterday. Um, again, I, I was thinking with the community about doing a separate one for the community, but I knew I was doing this again tonight, so. It's great to see the eighty-nine people on here today, both teachers and community members. To be a part of the process and, and to listen, to learn a little bit of what's transpired the past two days in our school, so. That's all I have a- a- at this time. If the committee has questions, more than happy to answer them. And then we can go through our process of public comment.
Uh, I just had one thing I wanted to say.
Yes.
Um, actually, I have two things. Um, first of all, I know you haven't looked into it, but I just wanna. When we ask questions and when we give opinions tonight, I just would ask that people realize that like. You know, this isn't also about personal opinion. We're following guidelines, things like that, so just keep that in mind. Um, but as far as, okay, so just a reminder that these situations did not occur in school, they occurred out of school. And secondly, um, I know you haven't gotten into that testing thing, but. You'll notify parents before you do test some kids, right? Or do you not know that yet?
I have, I, I just, I received the email on, I saw it late Monday that said, congratulations, you've been accepted into the process. I looked at, um, the five attachments, the first attachment, I think fifteen, sixteen pages long. And I haven't had to dive into, but I, I, I can say probably with a high degree of certainty, we're not going to be swabbing kids and testing kids without parental permission.
From what I've read into the program, there is, there is a parental permission form that needs to be signed.
Yeah.
Anyone else from the committee?
I don't have a question specifically yet, but, um, maybe wanna just kinda throw out there that. Especially with the mix of people that we have tonight, and I do hope that we hear from a lot of you, because I think that it's helpful. Um, you know, just kinda to lay the framework ahead of time that. Everybody involved in the decision-making at the schools really cares about the students and. Is really doing everything that they can to make this year work, so. Um, and they care about the teachers too, so going into it, I just don't want anybody to sort of think that. Uh, anybody who's involved in the decision-making process is that this is easy for them. This is not an easy thing for them, and I really appreciate. All the admin and Paul and Lisa and Kelly and everybody who's been working on this. Um, yeah, it's tough, so. You have sympathetic ears. That's just all I wanna say.
You want that, Heather? Okay. Um, so if anybody has any questions, you can use the little, raise your hand. Well, if you're being ignored, you can tell us that. And Dr. Vera, I'll try and answer what, any questions that anybody has.
Uh, sorry, hand go up. I don't want it to wind down. Um, there is one from Emerson and Bob LaFonte.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Um, just a question on the remote learning. If, if we're gonna have extended remote school. Is there a capacity to videotape and store learning sessions? For working parents rather than kinda work on this construct of. Eight AM to two PM classes that you have to work with your primary student on because they can't log in? I'm just wondering if there's a, if there is a chance with, now that everybody seems to have technology. iPads, Chromebooks. That teachers might have some flexibility to tape some segments. So parents can work around their own work schedule and still submit classwork during the course of the day to meet the hours requirement?
Uh, you, I'll, I'll answer that question. So, right now, we have a, we, when, when. We had to negotiate with the Douglas Teachers Association. A memorandum of agreement that talked about the parameters of what this new model and this new construct would, would look like. Um, I don't have a copy of, of the MOA. It's about eight to nine pages long. But one piece of the MOA talked about recording sessions and recording live-streamed sessions, which is what this would be. Um, if memory serves me correct, it said that, um. We could not mandate the teachers record their live-streamed sessions, so. I know they have the ability to post videos, which is what they did on those asynchronous days. On, if you're Cohort A, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, going into this new paradigm where teachers are going to be doing a lot of live streaming. Um, that would be a conversation we'd have to have with the Douglas Teachers Association as to whether or not they would be recording or not recording their, um. Their lessons and their lectures.
Thanks for your commentary on that. Um. Alright, I hope, you know, everybody appreciates that, you know, there are working families out there too. And that the union can be flexible under these circumstances to help accommodate people that need to work from home. And may not have the structure of a school day to teach their kids. But tha- thank you, that's, that's, I appreciate the response.
You're welcome, thank you. I do not see, I don't see anything in the chat. I'm gonna scroll again through. The participants.
Dr. Vera, that says that you do a very good job communicating.
Thank you. Oh, there's something in the chat, I'm sorry. Oh, it says, I don't think the raise your hand feature is enabled for all participants. Um, if that is the case and you are uncomfortable just shouting out your. Answer, um, feel free to enter into the chat. I do see another, um, hand that just went up here. Beth. Or did it go back to, oh, it's back up, Beth.
I'm sorry, I was just seeing if it actually worked. I'm sorry, I'm a little kid. I apologize.
Thank you.
Nothing to see here.
The good news is it does work.
Yes. Right.
No questions?
Okay.
I have a quick question. I can't figure out. But it's semi-related. Are flu shots still going to be required by January first for students to go back to school?
I'm gonna try to answer that diplomatically. We've been man, we've been asked by the Board of Health and the, um. Governor and the commissioner to inform families that as of this January one, all students need to have a flu vaccine. You have three options available to you. You can get the flu vaccine, you can send in a medical waiver that says. That, um, for whatever medical reason you can't do it. And, um, you can send in an email that says due to religious beliefs, you're asking for an exemption. And, um, I'm hoping that people take advantage of one of those three options.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so, uh, question came in. Now that we are fully remote, what schedule we follow for Cohort B tomorrow at the elementary school? Um, I believe Mr. Bell has sent that out. I see him on here. I don't wanna misquote him.
Alright, so tomorrow at the elementary school, the students are gonna be with their co, their, their homeroom teacher, so. Um, if they're Cohort A, Cohort B, um, doesn't matter, they go to their homeroom teacher for their morning meeting and then they follow that homeroom teacher's schedule for the, the four rotations through the period, so. Um, if it's third, fourth, or fifth grade, they'll still rotate through their teachers. Teachers should have those schedules posted in class portion of Google Classroom.
Thank you. Alright, another question came up. How does potential closure from December first to the nineteenth comply with DESI? Everything that I've read states this is not in addition. Of course, numbers are going to go up. Then you look at data on the twentieth, is it going up across the US? So there's no real chance for Douglas to go back to school. Not necessarily the case, so in, in terms of. Wha- what has come up with DESI guidelines, I'll, I'll speak a little bit to that, just to kind of. Have people understand the story behind the story. Um, the governor came out, along with the commissioner, two weeks ago, made a statement, they want more kids in school. A lot of this stemmed from, um, a lot of communities who are still in a remote platform. There were communities across the Commonwealth, and I'm not talking about your Worcester's, your Framingham's, your Boston's, your major city schools. You're talking about communities the size of Douglas who are still in a fully remote model. And that was a statement that said, hey, look. The data doesn't support it. You're a small community, you need to be open. Um, the other push was that there are a lot of communities who are doing fully asynchronous learning. Um, and again, the push was to get away from asynchronous towards more synchronous learning. In terms of the question about closing down, um, the governor put, I don't know if it was the governor or, or the commissioner. A lot of schools were looking to close down. For the holidays as a preventative measure, not as a result of what data tells you. But as a preventative measure, and thi- and this was a conversation that started back in early to mid October. So that was quickly squashed by the commissioner who said, if you're gonna close. From Thanksgiving through January one as a preventative measure, it's going to trigger in, in audit. Um, with, with that said, um. What we're looking at here is now data, so if we decide to make the close, we didn't close down. Four weeks ago as a preventative measure, we might stay closed based off of the data, the spike in numbers. Um, so I hope that answers that question. The next question comes up, when you look at the data in the town, are you taking into consideration family clusters? Are you only looking at total numbers? This was a question that came up a lot over the summer, because people wanted a solid metric, like. It have to be black and, and white, and, um, I've always said that I was, we, we can't do black and white in this situation. Because this is such a fluid situation and it's so, um, and it's so, um. It changes and it's situational, so for instance, I believe this, last Friday, there were twenty-two. Cases in, in Douglas. When the metric comes out in the next week or two, that's probably gonna jump to at least ten more cases. So when you look at it, you're gonna see twenty-two to, let's say, thirty-two. We already know where those ten are coming from. So when we're looking at the data, when I'm looking at the data, and again, I, I wanna say a huge thanks to the board of health, because they've been phenomenal. We look to see at where it's coming from. So earlier in the year, we saw a spike, it might have been something from. have been something from one case to six cases, and it was a dramatic jump. And when we looked into the information, we called the Board of Health, the spike came from one family. It didn't occur in Douglas to contact, and the family didn't have anything to do with the public schools. So although the spike went dramatic from one to five, one to six, when you dove into the numbers and you looked into it, you came to realize that you came to realize that it was specific. So we're going to look at a whole lot of factors. Someone else says, I like to ask a question, but I cannot raise my hand. So you can either feel free to speak out loud. I don't want to call you out if you want to do it anonymously, or if you just like to type it in the chat. I will scroll to see if any other hands are up. I think people are favoring the chat.
Dr. Vera, can I just add something while you're looking for questions?
Absolutely.
Just talking about the 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 data, because we are going off, like he said, of the numbers, but also looking at the cases. I just wanted to make the point that things have changed greatly from March. Things have changed from last week. There there some people get very confused, you know, the guidelines that we had three months ago are not necessarily the guidelines that we have now, because as this has changed, we've adapted. DESI has adapted. Things have changed. And one of the latest is that the CDC has now removed their recommendation for keeping schools open. That had been their recommendation, and they have taken that off their website and said that the data basically said the data they used to come to that decision at this point is a little outdated, and they have new data. They have not recommended closing schools, but they no longer recommend keeping schools open as the goal. So while you see us making changes to how we're doing things, just know that the data behind the scenes and the guideline behind the scenes are changing just as fast as we are.
Thank you. And just to add to that, I know we shared a metric and the school committee approved a metric back in August. And based off of the new guidelines that came out two weeks ago, and then again, last week, we know we need to change that. I was working on that this week, and then the past two days have gone a little crazy. So I put that on the back burner. But I know people have looked at the at the metric and said, well, what you're saying doesn't line up. Well, the state changed the rules of the game twice on us. We now need to adapt. But I also don't want to quickly change the metric without having time to fully understand what it means and and how they're interpreting it and give it some time to do it. When we proposed that, when I proposed that in in August, I'd spent about a month looking at it and figuring it out and talking to various people. So I don't want to jump and propose something as a quick knee jerk reaction without fully studying the implications of the of the new metric that's out there. I'm just waiting on one person to type in a question. I hope Mrs. Keegan, everyone stays for your transfers and classifications and reclassifications later on tonight.
I just wanted to say something else in regards to what was just said about the Governor changing rules and stuff like that, and the differences from March and all that. It's that actually, they've changed things, but they still say they still recommend schools being open. They've just modified the way that they do the the labeling and things like that. So I mean, there's a lot more treatments and stuff like that out there. I don't I don't want to like make us all sound so pessimistic. I think there's a lot of positive.
No, I was just referring to the CDC. I know that I know the state and the Governor. I was just referring to the CDC.
Yeah, they're always changing though. So I think that not doing a knee jerk reaction is the right thing to do. And I think what we're doing right now is is very wise, actually.
Right. So there are three questions that that have come up in the chat, and I'm just going to read them as presented. First one says, however, the town data does not represent the actual school data. There could be 22 cases in Douglas, but none are in the schools. The additional data will represent current positive cases we are quarantining for. I am part of a school district that has had 17 positive cases with no community spread. Closed contacts have been quarantined, including whole classrooms. Why does the Douglas? Why does Douglas need to be so drastic by closing the whole district? The effect of the presumptive positive cases in the close contacts do not represent the entire district of contacts of the close contacts who are not positive in no way in any state guidelines state they need to quarantine. I'm just going to respond to that somewhat vaguely again to protect the situations. We spent hours on on Monday and again, yesterday with the Board of Health and with our nurses, understanding the individual situation here, and understanding the the potential of the, I believe it was 11 cases, understanding the stories behind them and understanding the the implications that if they test positive, what it could be to a district. I've always maintained that, you know, the safety of our staff and students is is paramount to me, and knowing how this could potentially spread, if two, three, four, five of those cases became positive, led me to make the decision I did. And again, in conjunction with working with our admin team, working with our nurses, working with the Board of Health, the three of the cases have come back positive. There's some other things associated with it that I really don't want to get into in a public forum to protect the confidentiality of the individuals associated with it. And over the past two, two days, we've seen some of the close contacts come back as going from being asymptomatic to symptomatic. So again, erring on the side of caution, I made the decision. Those of us who attended my Zoom sessions on in July and August and in September knew that it was a huge priority of mine to get kids in school and to not start remote and to start hybrid. So to have to go to a remote setting for 14 days is not something that I wanted and not something that any of us took lightly. Another question says, let me just respond to one person here. I'm sorry if I can find them. There was a person that asked in the chat, can I ask a question? So you know who you are. Just type it in, and I'll read the question before yours. Your statement earlier regarding your idea of success at the start of the year was a goal of two weeks for hybrid learning, which seems low. Considering the decision to go fully remote in a relatively safe school atmosphere, what is your version of success for the remainder of the school year? Well, I don't want to say my my benchmark was I don't want to say my benchmark was two weeks. Looking at the way looking at the way the yeah, looking at the way the data was, we were we were well, we said, let's hope that with the data trending, getting all these kids in school, being in a close things, we were worried we were going to come in for two, three weeks and go and then have to go out. We've been in for two weeks and we've been in for over two weeks. I'm sorry, for over two months. What is my vision of success for the remainder of the year? My vision of success for the remainder of the year is to stay in school, have the numbers go down, and continue to assess the model that we have and slowly try to and safely try to bring back more more students. If you look, if you haven't seen the the agenda, and I struggled as to whether or not I was going to present this, but I mentioned it at the last school committee meeting. The next piece on the agenda is phase two transition planning, which I was going to do that I wasn't going to do, but it's important to talk about. And what it talks about is if the numbers go down and if the numbers flatten, what is our plan as a district to bring more kids back? And this was my first presentation to the school committee to talk about it. So if you want to stay on and see what's success, we're going to go forward with that. Yes, Joanna?
I just want to kind of comment. I mean, I work in the sixth grade, and the place that I want to be most of all is in school with the students, doing what I'm supposed to be doing. But I have I have some concerns. And and I had a discussion with you, an email with you, and I had a discussion with Mr. Delaney. And I understand everything perfect per, you know, I understand perfectly. And it seems to me, though, that our students and our parents have more rights than I as a staff member or do. And I understand HIPAA regulations and I and and all of that. But is a possibility of a third party contact, but yet we can't call, we can't ask because of HIPAA rights, they don't have to answer us. That's a concern for me, my health. So I mean, at this point, I'm almost like, I hope we don't go back to school. And I'm not the person that wants to say that. I'm not the person that wants to do that. But based on what's happened in the last couple of weeks, and the HIPAA for the students and the parents, doesn't work for me. It doesn't. And it it it's a it's a sore spot. You know, it's okay for my health and my well-being to be endangered, and I can just hang out and wait 14 days to get an answer and just hope. That doesn't work for me. So I think that needs to be considered.
And as I said, for the phase two, and if people want to stick around and watch and listen to the to the presentation, I think you'll see that. I don't want to I'll wait till to my presentation. I think that'll answer some of your questions, Joanna. Another question came up. The student body was not compromised from the events you referenced earlier in this week. That's not an accurate statement. When I said that members of the school community, and members of the school community include students, staff, and faculty members, there were members of the student body that were compromised at the time. And again, given given the information we have, and again, it wasn't easy to make the decision to shut down school. It's 14 days. I know the inconvenience and the burden this places on on parents. It wasn't something we did easy. And again, if we could have stayed open, and if we felt it was safe to stay open, we would have we would have done that. Another question in the chat. I have a child on an IEP being out of school until January 19th will lead to major aggression as IEP. He's already aggressed so much and is academically behind. Could a small number of IEP students return to school if the closure is longer than 14 days? Ms. Erkhart and I met today at 1 o'clock, and we've already started the discussion as to if something has to go on beyond the December 1 date, what are we going to do for our high needs population? What are we going to do for our students on the IEPs? What are we going to do for that? You know, the state definition of cohort C kids? And what are we going to do for our social emotional kiddos who are fragile and needed? So we had a meeting today at 1 o'clock. She's already started some preliminary stuff. She's been working with with her team on that. So we've already begun those discussions if we have to go out longer. So thank you for whoever asked that question.
Can I just ask, can I just add something really quick, Dr. Vera? I couldn't type it all out. It would take me way too long. I just I to echo what that whoever asked that question, I just want to appreciate a the way that you explained how you're defining cases, because I think what we're hearing as parents is just that there's these cases and not hearing necessarily the backstory, but how you're defining like what you said about the five people that it didn't occur in Douglas, that there is more being taken into account than just numbers, flat out numbers. I think, you know, I think a lot of us understand kind of this two week time period, but I think where a lot of the stress is coming from a lot of the families is moving beyond, you know, thinking that we're going into January. And just trying to prepare our kids. And I think that your explanation is real like I appreciate you and Mrs. Erkhart both for your responsiveness to questions from the families and stuff, because I know it's not easy right now. And I can echo like what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing from other families, like we are struggling. And I know our staff are struggling. And I I just my heart breaks for everybody because there is no actual good situation, like there is no good answer for any of this. And for the teachers, like, I feel you. I feel how scared you are. But I also see what we're seeing at home. And I see the kids that are really and truly struggling with more than ABCs in one, two, three, but with other things. And I just I really appreciate the time you guys are all taking to consider everything, because it's more than just numbers. It's people. So that's all I really had. Thank you.
The next question, and then I think we're going to wrap it up to to move on, says, why can't parents have the opportunity of choice to send students to school in hybrid? And those parents, they don't feel it's safe. It's safe environment, choose to opt for a full remote learning option. The school committee is making short sighted decisions that impact our lives and well-being of our children without our voice being included. What people need to understand, as I said, when I said individuals of the school community, that included teachers, that included staff, that included students. So again, trying to protect the the privacy and the privacy of individuals, sending people back to school and giving people the choice is under the assumption that teachers don't have to quarantine, and teachers aren't quarantining, and that teachers couldn't be impacted. We're a small we're a small district. You could have a situation relatively quickly where you might have to if four or five teachers become close contacts, you have to close a school because you can't staff a school. You can't get subs to cover a school if that happens. So I can understand the 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 choice piece of it. But if we can't staff a school, then the choice really would be difficult to happen. Ms. Brown, is that okay if we take it on to the next portion? Or if there's still one other question? If you want me to take it and have that be the last one?
Yeah, the one in the chat?
Yes, there's one left in the chat.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, it says, with kids struggling, could this result in students being held back? That's a conversation that would occur at the end of the year. Typically, schools don't hold people back. You know, if you look at it from a Department of Education standpoint, you have 12, you have 13 years, you get a SASED number when you walk in on day one of your kindergarten year, and then after 13 years of school, you have to report that SASED number out as to whether or not the student graduated or not graduated. In terms of holding people back, I'm sure that the Department of Education will be coming out with something surely as to how we're going to address the gaps that are created and have been created over the past year, year and a half. If you think about it, you have some school districts who are fully remote. You have some school districts who are hybrid. You have some school districts who are live streaming. There's some school districts who have kids in full time. The playing field is not the same across the Commonwealth. And that's a conversation we've had, the superintendent's level, and we've had with the Commissioner, that something needs to be done to make sure the playing field is level, because communities can't be penalized for their ability or lack of ability to match what's going on in area communities. All right. That was the last of the questions in the chat.
If anybody has any questions, you can email the principals, Dr. Vera, you can email the school committee, and your teachers. Thank you.
All right. Next, I'm going to share my screen with with people so they can have an opportunity to look at the presentation. Want to start off by saying that, let me see if I can fix this. I'm sorry. Want to start off by saying, I I struggled as to whether or not I was going to present this today or not, given the fact that we just spent 45 minutes talking about closing schools down and a spike in data. And this phase two rollout talks about bringing more kids And this phase two rollout talks about bringing more kids back and I, looking at the model and tweaking the model that we have. So I went back and forth as to whether or not I was going to present it or not. This was completed on Friday, uh, this, this, this presentation, and a lot's changed from Friday through today. I made the decision to go forward and present it because at some point we're going to come out of this dip. And in order to transition from the, one of the models that we're in into a different model is going to take a tremendous amount of time and a tremendous amount of work. And what I didn't want to see happen by not presenting today is to hold off until February, March, or April and be in a position where we could do things to better help our kids and to put kids in a place to be more successful and then run out of time because I didn't present this at this point. So I'm presenting this now and, and the last slide talks about the timeline and I will amend and, and update it. Again, we've talked about adapting, adjusting, and pivoting over the course of the year, and, and that's one thing that we need to be ready to do. I just want to be crystal clear as I present this, there are four main things we need to keep in mind before anything can happen, before we look at changing models, before we look at tweaking current plans, before we look at bringing back of any more kids. First thing we need to do, and it's in no particular order, first thing we need to do is we need to make sure we have the space and we can keep kids six feet apart. So we have to looking at our space and we have to examine all of our space needs. Second thing we need to keep in mind is remember, there has been no change in whether or not, in how we transport kids to and from school. The guidance still states that you can only put one kid per seat. So if we're going to bring back more students or change any of our models, we have to think about how we're going to get kids to and from school. That's no small task. Third thing we need to do is whatever we do and change, we have to sit down and have a thoughtful and lengthy conversation with the Douglas Teachers Association. We can't just change from the current model to a different model without negotiating it with the Douglas Teachers Association. That takes time. And finally, before we do any changes, we need to make sure that the data supports going from a remote to a hybrid or a hybrid into a different platform. So just laying out what I've laid out now, it's going to take us some, some time to do that. Want to talk a little bit about before school started, in, in July and August, our priority was getting students and staff safely back into schools. I'm not going to read the entire list, you, you, you can read this, but just highlight a couple of things. Our priority is to get students and staff safely back into schools. We had to make sure our safety protocols worked and, and were followed. We had to look at our logistics and make sure that everything that we had planned worked. Some people have said, well, if you knew this was going to be an issue, or if you knew there was a better solution, how come you didn't implement it back in August? Well, this is what we were focused in on, and we didn't know that some of the things we did were going to work and some of the things we um, didn't think were working, were going to work. So we, our focus was to get kids back in school in September and make sure that we had our safety protocols in place. As I said, we've been in the model for two months and we listened to staff, we listened to kids, we listened to parents, and we've identified issues of what we learned. And again, some of these we could have predicted back in July, August. Some of these were brought to our attention back in July and August. Some of them are more magnified than what we thought, some of them are things that we didn't even think of that came to light. But again, some of the things that we learned were gaps being created for students. Time spent in person answering questions and catching kids up cuts into content time. We knew there were going to be a lot of kids on Zoom in some instances, and that's been an, an issue. You know, the, you always hear it in a regular platform, one teacher gives too much homework, another teacher doesn't give enough homework. One teacher gives too many tests, another teacher doesn't give enough tests. The new paradigm is too much time on Zoom, not enough time on Zoom. Too much work, not enough work. So again, and then the, you know, the remote challenge for students and families that, that was brought up earlier. Those are some of the identified issues that we saw, that we knew, and that we learned. Sorry, went, went forward. Identified issues for staff. Again, some of these we knew, some of these we didn't know, some of these we were um, we learned from talking to people. Managing three different platforms, what do I mean by platforms? Managing um, live in-person instruction, managing Zoom sessions, and managing asynchronous slash Google, a Google classroom. Staffs managing three different platforms in some instances. Getting feedback and assessing students in Zoom isn't easy. I've heard this has died down, but for the first four to six weeks of school, the increase in emails and calls due to the three instruction models was problematic and made, it made it difficult for, for staff. Not all students engaged in remote learning days has caused for gaps to, to be created. Managing behaviors and, and things on, on Zoom. So again, we learned a lot from our staff in, in these identified issues. And we were trying to put a plan in place as to how to address these. So going down a little bit more granular, we looked at I K two concerns, our, our early elementary. And again, a- as I've said, some of these issues we knew about, and some of these were brought to our, our attention, and some of these surfaced. You know, the difficulty in doing informal assessments. You know, we thought maybe we could dive a little bit deeper into our curriculum, and in many instances we are, but in some instances we're, we're skimcording the, the curriculum. The limited fine motor skill activities for remote students. The limited independence of, for kids inside the, the classroom. How difficult it is for some kids to focus and stay focused on Zoom as a result of, of them being young. Our three to five concerns very similar to our K to two concerns. Again, the need for more person instruction, the workload associated with it, the difficulties at, at times providing IEP services. Again, things that we learned and things that, that we've seen in the past two months. In grades six to eight, uh, again, managing and working on that Mary curriculum from live days to remote days. Retaching in many instances what was supposed to be done remotely in person because some kids sometimes aren't doing all their work on remote days. Remote work consistently not being done, only being done by twenty-five to forty percent of the kids. So some concerns that, that have come up. And then finally, at the high school, you know, we knew it was going to be an issue, seeing kids only once per week. The midnight deadline for kids to turn in works has become problematic. The issues that some of our students with disabilities are having accessing supports on remote days. And then some of the issues with executive functioning limitations of kids with using email, Google Classroom, and to-do lists. So we identified a lot of concerns, we identified a lot of concerns in these age groups, both from surveys we did, meetings with parents, meetings with staff, and meetings as an admin team. And then we have our special ed concerns that, that we have here. And again, i- it's very similar to what we saw in, in the K to five gr- age, I'm sorry, the K to twelve age group, having difficulty meeting demands of the three schedules. You know, a lot of issues or some issues with our ingenuity and the ability to provide services and accommodations with ingenuity has, has been challenging. So as we looked at this, we started thinking, okay, if we wanted to begin to address these issues, look at potentially a different model, look at potentially changing things. What are the logistics we need to make that happen? And I think once you see these logistics, you'll see why I made the decision to present this today, because to work out these logistics is going to take some time. And isn't anything that we can do overnight and, and quickly. So again, it's keeping that in, in our K to two, K to three, our early elementary is keeping, making sure that we keep kids six feet apart. If for whatever reason we want to bring back more students in I K to two, K to three, we have to keep them six feet apart. We can't fit more than fourteen desks in a classroom. So if we're going to bring back more than one cohort, a cohort and a half at a time, you're looking at potentially having to use two classrooms. How do you do that? Is it a teacher standing in between a doorway? Is it a teacher at a para? Do we need additional staffing? Bus issues, only one student per bus. If you look at the cafeteria, some of our cafeterias have the ability at this time to handle additional kids in them, some of them don't. So now we'd be looking at students eating in classrooms. If we're looking at a teacher using two classrooms potentially, you're looking at a teacher responsible for curriculum in two groups. What does this do for our specialists? So again, a lot of logistics in, in K to two. K to, in our three to five age group, very, very similar issues a- as we have in, in two to five. So before anything happens, we would have to spend a significant amount of time addressing these logistics and being able to answer questions. If you remember from the summer, it took us about six to eight weeks to iron out the logistics of a remote model. So this wouldn't be any, any different. When you look at our sixth to eighth grade, and again, similar, if we were to bring back more students in cohort C, do we have the space for, for it? How are we going to manage the students in our Douglas Learning Academy versus kids inside classrooms? How are we going to hold students accountable for attendance? At the high school, would this mean revisiting a bell schedule? What would this mean for internet capacity? For transportation, remember that the elementary and the primary share a bus and the middle school and the high school share a bus. What does that look like? Kids would have to be on similar schedules in order to be able to share buses. What happens for cleaning if we're bringing in more kids? What does that mean for our custodians? Does that mean they have to stay longer? Does that change our cleaning patterns? Does that change our deep clean on Wednesdays and over the weekends? What is that, what does that look like? And then again, for special education logistics, it's again, how are we going to solve the issues of potentially bringing back more students? How are we going to solve the issues of service providers changing their service delivery model for for kids who, who come back in a completely different platform? So there's a lot of logistics to, to work out. This was, I, I wrote this on Friday and it was aggressive, I look at it now and, and it needs, and it needs to be modified. But um, I, I didn't want to change this because I knew the document was out and I wanted to talk about it. So my original timeline was to propose a plan to the school committee on December second, that's the next school committee meeting. And in December, be able to share said plan with the staff, share with families, and then meet and negotiate any changes with the Douglas Teachers Association because that happens. School committee of the plan at the January sixth meeting and try to begin a phased-in rollout in mid-January. So had what happened this week not happened, had we not seen a spike, I was looking at beginning a rollout plan in two months. That's going to be pushed out a little bit based off of what happened this week and based off of the data we see over the next over the next uh, two to three weeks. But I wanted to have this conversation with the school committee so they could see a plan. And um, I needed to share it with them first before I could present it beyond this, this forum. So um, I'm going to stop sharing, the next slide says questions. I'm going to stop sharing and open it up to the school committee if you have any questions about what I just shared. I know the timing's awful, and I was saying to myself, Paul, are you really going to do this? You're talking about closing, but when I, when I looked at it and, and I started thinking about the time it would take from Alpha to Omega between working out the logistics, communicating with people, negotiating it, giving families notice, tweaking whatever plans we have. I knew it was going to take two months, and then I said, if I waited until January to do this, now you're looking at March or April, and I really didn't want, I would much rather have a plan in place and have it negotiated and have it agreed upon and said, okay, if the numbers get to a respectable number and we can stop making a transition, at least we have a plan in place by mid to end of January and have to wait until April or May to do so.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's part of what we discussed anyway, that's why we're doing remote right now, because that was the agreement that we made, that when certain numbers go up, this is what we do, but we also have to plan and have a vision for what we hope will eventually happen. You know? So I think that it's very prudent of us to plan. So thank you.
Resources locally that uh, we're working with other schools that are similar in terms of size and demographics that are going through a similar thing that we're bouncing ideas off of. If you can speak to that.
Do you want me to speak to every schools that are going through?
No.
Lockdown or moving forward, because I've done both.
No, like reopening plans, are there any, because I know that the state has really left in a lot of ways all school districts to sort of fly by the seat of their pants. And so I was wondering if there's any, if this is just up to, you know, the, the Douglas schools to figure out what's best for us, obviously every different school district is, is different, it's tough. Like there's apples and oranges, somebody could look at a similar population size, but if they've got a really old building and poor ventilation, that's a different animal with this. But do you have an admin team and everybody who's working on this have other resources or guidance or ideas like to be able to are sort of rolling back in?
Yeah, great, great question. So again, you're right, the, Jesse is, is quick to say it's a local decision in, in many instances. So um, last week, when I was getting ready to do this, I sent out a brief survey. I sent out a survey to all superintendents, we had forty-four school districts who responded to the survey. I asked various questions about how are they transporting kids, about various logistical issues, and I had forty-four people, forty-four districts respond. Some of them are districts that have a lot more money than we do and, and are able to do things. But at least, you know, there, there was some narrative there of things you could learn or at least grab surveys from or grab plans from. So um, as we move forward to potentially begin to roll some of this, some of this out, I have enough, I have good contacts out there that I can draw upon for ideas and suggestions and help.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the only question I have, Dr. Weir, is the transportation piece, obviously logistics is going to be the nightmare. Have we thought about maybe asking the parents if they're willing to come back and drive their kid to school and advise them being in school? I, I think that should be an option, I just don't know if you've explored that yet or not.
Sure, so one of the questions in the survey was, how did you get around transportation? And every district who has more kids back have asked parents to drive kids to school, and they said that in the communities that responded to the survey, where the option, where the option was, we want to bring more kids back, but in order to do so, we need parents to drive kids to school. Parents said, we will drive our kids to school if it means having them back four to five days a week. So that would be one of the options. We, we've, we've started a discussion, Ms. Keegan was grading, getting me some information as to where we stand with bus capacity. Some of our buses, if we ever tried to blend cohort A and cohort B, we couldn't do it. Some of our buses, we might be able to do it, some of our buses have additional room. But then again, the only way to do that would be to have families um, transport kids to and from school. I have one person here who said, I would gladly give up space on buses to drive my two kids to school. So um, thank you very much for, for that, so we already have one volunteer. So again, I, I think from, from what the superintendents I talked to and responded to the survey, they said people stepped up and agreed to drive their kids to school or give up their seats on the bus in order to get them back four to five days a week.
Anyone else? No, I think you can move on.
And, and I just want, want to say, especially to, to the teachers who, who are out there. And I said this over the summer, when, when we met, whatever we do, we do fully, fully, fully understand that it needs to involve a discussion with the Douglas Teachers Association and a lengthy conversation with them about any changes. So I don't want people to leave here saying that uh, we're going to make all these changes and it's happening tomorrow, that's not the case. I've already had a conversation with Mr. Ray and the DTA Union President, and he's well aware of the fact that I know that any changes that occur need to be sat down at the table and, and negotiated. So I just want to make sure that's crystal clear before we move on to the next part. Before we move on to the next part of my report. All right, there's one other person in the chat. Okay, second person. Giving up two seats on the bus. So thank you to those two families. We have four, four openings. And Julie, thank you for changing your background uh, on your seat. All right. Um, with that, with that, again, I hope people stay on. The last part of my report i- is an update from principals and um. And um, directors uh, at Nellie. Again, I asked them to present back in uh, a week and a half ago. I told them they were going to be on the agenda. So part of their presentation is going to be about highlighting what's happened the past few weeks in school and looking forward. But also spending some time talking about the changes of this. The last time we did this, we went random. I was clear that I was going to set the bar very high and start with Mrs. Sosha. So Ms. Sosha, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So prior to going remotely, um, things are going really well at the primary. The students were great. The kids were adorable. They they would wear their mask. We had to tell them when to take them off because they just wore them all the time. They kept their distance. Um, preschoolers have little buckets. They went outside when they could to have um, mask breaks and things like that. They were able to socialize at lunchtime and um, even in the classroom and they they connected with their teachers. So that was the really nice part. So it's great that they were able to do that. Uh, the the children were great with hand washing. They washed hands often. And they use the new term instead of hand sanitizer. It's now hanitizer. So I know, right? Kids and teachers are happy to be in school. Today, teachers were there and they were packing things up and it was actually sad seeing them leave because uh, they want the kids back. They they're praying to be back December 1st to see those little ones. It was almost a normal feeling, you know, in the past few weeks. That even though they were there only two days, it still started to feel normal. The teachers were collaborating um, daily to keep that curriculum consistent across the grade levels. Last week, we honored sixty-six veterans by sending them notes and pictures from the students. And a small token of appreciation for their service, which was a Dunkin' Donuts gift card for coffee. They also placed flags outside in the, in honor of the veterans. So now changing over to remote, the goal is to keep the day as close as possible to when they were in person. And it's really difficult zooming with that age. So kindergarten and first grade will zoom three to four times a day. It might be fifteen to twenty minutes each time. And they'll be starting with a morning meeting. They'll be having an ELA reading, writing. Zoom, a math zoom, and in some cases, an additional practice or a closing zoom. So they are following the schedule that they would have when they were at home on their remote days, just to be consistent. In addition, when they're off the zooms, they will have assignments and some pre-recorded videos and lessons. Some of it's mystery science. Some things might be using ST math. So those are the things that when they get off the zoom, they'll be doing. New, starting this week and starting tomorrow, the students are going to be able to zoom with their art teacher, music teacher. Phys ed teacher and library teacher. So that should be some fun for them. And we've also packed up some books that need to get to the parents. So I sent an email today asking parents to drop by and pick up the next unit books in math and in reading. So it's Thursday or Friday from eight to three thirty. And then for preschool, um, they have been in the whole time. So going remote is totally different for them. They do have Google classrooms all set up. There was one there ready to go today. Parents need to sign into those Google classrooms. So we don't have a big turnout yet on the signup. And they are going to ask, also start zooming. So this should be an experience. I can't wait for the first zoom tomorrow. They'll zoom in morning meeting, which they'll talk about the calendar and the weather and do a little bit of um, the foundations, the letter sounds. And they are going to do that at nine thirty each day. So they'll start right now with one zoom, see how it goes. And um, move on from there. And they will also have some pre-recorded lessons and some um, video stories and things like that for the kids to do. To kind of keep the day going as much as possible. But our goal is to come back December 1st. I'm just putting that up there. That's all I have, Dr. Vera.
Thank you.
How was the bar? The bar was set pretty high, right?
It is set very high. Mr. Romano is going to accept the challenge to um, to go next.
So um, I am feeling a little disappointed by being closed and and so, and I do want to make sure that parents understand. You know, we're, we're not thrilled to be closed, to have the buildings closed either. You know, I think we've finally gotten into a pretty good rhythm with the the. Combination of the remote, with the long block um, in-person combination. I think stress levels were. Kind of starting to drop for staff, for students, for me. And so. You know, it is, it is a disappointment to have these things uh, to have to go remote. We'll talk at the beginning about some of the kind of aspects of what we normally do that we were able to start to bring in 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 a modified form. But you know, we had the, the seniors did their Halloween parades um. A couple of weeks ago, they went up to the other schools and they saw the kids. We were able to recognize our Adam Scholars. We'll mention, I think we were in a spirit week this week that we only got one day's worth. And uh, we have class selections coming up for the freshmen. We have NHS induction coming up. So we have a lot of kind of the normal. Sort of the extra things that we were really trying to bring into the school and we're still going to try to keep those things going. You know, and I I do still feel confident in what we were doing to keep kids distant, keep kids safe. The kids um, have done an amazing job at doing the right thing at school. And I do want to especially recognize Mel Gusher, the school nurse for the high school. She's doing an amazing job working with families, with students, with staff. Katie Mello, Jill Carpenter and Kristin O'Brien. Who they're making the remote program work, which has been a huge lift for us, has been a very big challenge for us. And and I do appreciate the patience that families had with that program too. Uh, and then the custodial staff who've done an amazing job keeping the building clean. And then finally, the teachers, because I do think the teachers are making the most of. What we have for time and space and opportunities to try to give kids um, a good education and to give them. On what they need for for their future development. They've been flexible. They've been vigilant to kids' safety and they've been very innovative in what they're doing. Um, and I had an extensive conversation today with the art teacher where she's going to collaborate with some of the other. Art teachers from the area who have been remote along and kind of figure out some of the strategies that they've been using. And that's, to me, that just kind of shows like this level of commitment that the teachers have where they're not just throwing in the towel and saying, oh, well, what do you want me to do? We're remote. They really are committed to making sure that kids get what they need. And we even started today talking about what are we going to do if there are gaps um, for kids as we move forward? You know, what, what options do we have to try to make sure that everybody is is finishing with the tools that they have? So you know, I mean, if there's any doubt among anybody that the teachers aren't committed to doing what they can or that they're kicking back with their coffee. During these remote days um, and just taking a little time off, that that's not the case at all. They are very committed to doing the best that they can. So our remote schedule is very much keeping to as close as we can to the regular schedule. We spent a couple of months now training um, the the kids and the staff and ourselves. Uh, and me to do this schedule right and get it done right. So we want to keep things as close as we can to what we normally do. So we didn't make any big sweeping changes to the schedule. There's still a um. You know, three classes on Monday, Tuesday, three, uh, sorry, three classes on Monday, Thursday, three classes on Tuesday, Friday. We're not going to do advisory and intervention tomorrow because the system that we had planned. Ended up being a lot bigger of a challenge for us to get the kids into their advisories first thing in the morning and then get them to an intervention block afterwards. It just was going to be a nightmare to get that out. So tomorrow we will start with A block instead at nine o'clock. But after that, everything else is basically the same, same thing, just doing it from home. Um, and you know, it's, it's our hope that we're all back and that we've got basketball going and then we've got. Some form of winter skits uh, going and you know, maybe we can even figure out some sort of socially distant winter carnival. So I've been throwing some ideas out for that too. So I'm pretty optimistic about things going forward.
Any questions for Mr. Romano from the committee? All right, Ms. Urquhart always goes last, so we're going to put her in the middle here.
I'm long-winded. Are you sure you want to do that?
You know your time to three minutes.
Oh, my gosh. All right, you guys, ready? Here we go. Right, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump off of sort of where where Josh, where Josh ended. You know, again, I'm not going to highlight all the different groups um, because at the end of the day, as a whole. Everybody has just been unbelievable. The ability to adapt within the last few months has been incredible to watch. I, you know, I think as human beings within our, within our human conditioning, you know, things, things like a pandemic will naturally scare us. And somehow people are getting beyond that and that, that's, that's not just staff and faculty, that's the families. And that's the kids and um, we need to continue to work together and we will continue to work together. And somebody else I do want to acknowledge is Dr. Vera. The fact that he jumped in to this as a new superintendent.
Thank you.
And really showed how resilient he is is unbelievable. You know, not a lot of people would do that during this time. So I've got to give him a ton of credit and. You know, hope that everybody knows that he has a dedicated and 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 strong school committee and administrative team and and group of teachers. And Paris and AVAs and nurses and custodial staff and everybody behind him. So. So there's that. So now I've left myself with only a minute and a half, but that's okay. So. Basically, just to tell you a little bit about the Office of Student Support. What we're doing at this point is we're finishing up on our reconvene meetings. We reconvened. Almost every single IEP team, which is amazing. Um, we have, we just have a few lingering out there. So we're going to finish those up. Five oh four meetings for the most part are caught up at this point. So now for the IEP and the five oh four meetings, we're, we're, we're going to start the typical process that we would in in any typical year. I I do want to speak to the remote learning because this obviously is a little bit of a change. Um, and I want to speak a little to the concerns around the high needs population. Like, like Dr. Vera said, him and I sat today and this is something that we've been prepared for. We, we have not had the luxury at all, really since the spring, to not be prepared for anything. So we have a number of plans for a number of scenarios. I can say that the principals and the Office of Student Support staff are are full aware that. There are some learners out there that are going to have a very difficult time learning remotely. What we're going to do is we're going to make sure first that we are considering health and safety. I am, I am going to very honestly say that. But then, of course, we are going to consider the educational and the social, emotional and behavioral needs of the kids. And we're going to make decisions around bringing kids back when, when they are, when they are ready to come back when it's safe. We did make the decision during this two-week period to keep everybody home simply because. There was such a variety of um, unknowingness. Um, and now that things are coming to fruition, we certainly did make the right decision. So that, that is great news. Through this process over the next two weeks, the meetings that we had scheduled virtually will continue. So nothing's going to change there. The evaluation piece of things, um, what we're going to do. I did speak with Kevin Reardon. We've had a couple of conversations around how we're going to address this. Because we do understand that, one, if if a child has an initial or reevaluation coming. A family may not be comfortable having their child formally assessed or coming into the school during this two-week closure. Okay? We also understand that there are some teachers or therapists that might not feel comfortable coming into the school. So we're sort of going to follow the criteria that we have this summer. It's, it's very strict, um, it's very safe, it's very consolidated. And um, I'm going to send a lot of information out around that. But basically, we are going to provide an option for kids to be evaluated if families are comfortable with that. So again, that will be coming out to families uh, tomorrow morning. Uh, and then the last thing that I just want to update everybody about is that there is going to be a press release. It's going to go out either tomorrow or the next day. And that is around our tier-focused monitoring, which is our mid-cycle review for the Office of Student Support Services. And basically what they're going to do is they look at special education and civil rights compliance. And um, we have fared well with that in the past. We want to, we want to continue with that. So the press release will go out and they should be coming out around, I'm going to say, middle of January. Well, I say coming out, they're going to be doing it virtually. And um, interviewing different stakeholders and and like that to um, to make sure we're in compliance. And that, that is it.
Any questions for Mrs. Urquhart? Mr. Delaney.
Good evening. All right, so I'm just going to give you some quick highlights and then I'm going to read uh, the email that went out to parents and staff and students today. Talk about uh, the plan moving forward. But again, I want to echo what my colleague said earlier, sorry, with Mrs. Sosha. That uh, we were, we were catching our stride and there was some really good energy in the building. And uh, you may have heard rumors that Mr. Delaney's uh, rollerblades did make a a debut. Last Friday and uh, they did and we had, it was, it was fun. Again, it was because it was. It's something I used to do all the time on Fridays in past years and you know, we haven't done it this year because it's just been kind of blah. But the energy was coming back and the kids, you know, lots of smiles. And then uh, this morning I learned. From a couple of different people that kids cried when they learned that we had to go remote. So um, that was both sad and I'm sorry for their tears, but I was also happy that that's, they've liked coming to school. And and that's good. And again, Dr. Vera's plan for phase two, as he lamented, should he talk about it or not? I I think it's important to to highlight that everything we've talked about is getting more kids back in the school and how difficult the the remote option was for us. And that, you know, we want the kids back in school and working so hard to do that. So um, you know, it was, we've. Been very vigilant um, and dedicated. And we're going to be talking about the the teachers in a little bit, but in terms of teachers, I'm very happy to report that we do have uh, finally, a wonderful STEM teacher. Christine DeCesar, um, she started the other week, so we're very happy for that. We thank everybody for their patience on that. She's the right person for a job. She's a wonderful addition to our staff. We're happy to have her. And also starting on uh, November 30th, if we have our special education teacher for uh, grade seven. And Andrea uh, DiTralisi uh, that will be starting with us. We have two new staff members and they're both very excited. Uh, and I, we are really blessed to get these two new team members. They have wonderful energy. They're highly qualified. Man of from heaven that we have these people coming to our, our school, particularly under the conditions that we're in. So I'm really excited for that. Again, some of the fun stuff, student council is is up and going. We got yearbook. They've been in in very earnest conversations with Mr. Staccari about uh, what we're going to do for chorus and band. Again, being remote throws a new monkey wrench into that, but we're, we're doing everything we can to to keep that energy going and um, move things forward. With that, I'm going to go ahead and and just share uh, the learning plan uh, in the middle school for the next um, until December. December 1st, again, starting tomorrow, uh, eleven nineteen, all DMS students will follow their normal schedule. Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Friday classes. Cohort A, B and C students will remotely attend classes. Uh, at the time that they would attend if they were in school. So there is no change in the schedule. They're just showing up. Uh, remotely as they would in person. Classes will now consist of a mix cohort A, B and C students. DLA students will continue to attend classes at the same time they have been. Their classes will now only contain DLA students. So now it's, we have, we'll, we'll have smaller remote classes, which is a good thing. Uh, DMS was scheduled to begin mandatory class attendance on eleven thirty. Two thousand twenty, the state has been changed to begin Thursday, uh, eleven nineteen. Again, um, there had been the option for students to attend either synchronously or asynchronously. Dr. Vera had announced that the other week that that was a pivot they were going to make and uh, no time like the present to to get kids to come to school on time. Teachers will be taking attendance at the beginning of each class. All students will engage in synchronous learning for each class unless directed otherwise by the teacher. Wednesdays, Wednesdays remain as they have been unless directed differently by the teachers as well. The teachers have worked extraordinarily hard this year to provide a high-quality remote learning platform for all students at Douglas Middle School. It's more important than ever that all, and I say that in capital letters, students take full advantage of it. A fair and appropriate public education is required to be provided to all students. The teachers are providing this opportunity every single day in every class. But the opportunity for this great education only works as students attend class. And this was my impalement to all, imploring students, all students uh, to commit to being the best students that they can be. And this includes uh, having a proper routine of attending all classes every day. Completing all assignments in a timely manner, have cameras on during instruction so teachers can see students are involved in their learning. And also to have a proper place to learn within their house. Get schoolwork done during school time. Don't put it off. Uh, ask for help. Uh, we have the resources to help if you, if you want, uh, for. help, uh, we have the resources to help if you, if you want, uh, if you need it, but you have to speak up. So we're putting the onus on the students. Use time wisely, use remediation block to catch up or get ahead, show up to homeroom each morning at 7:25, because that's when school begins, attendance will be taken. And as always, I'm personally available to any students in need of help, whether it be academic, social, or something bothering them, or maybe they just want to catch up, but I'm here to help. And we will continue to support each other through these difficult times. Uh, we need to have consistent, and we need to, uh, consistently remind ourselves that to our students that choosing to learn is always the right thing to do. So, and I've also asked parents, if they have any questions, comments, concerns, please contact me directly, I'll try to help where I can.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Any questions for Mr. Delaney from the committee? All right, that leaves Mr. Bell.
That's for last, right?
Absolutely.
All right, just like, I'll, I'll echo some of the things that other, other schools have said. So, um, we're, we were finally getting into a groove with things. I, I think last week, I, I told Mr. Roni, I was like, I think things aren't, aren't perfect, but it felt like a, a regular school year for the first time all year, where we were doing kind of some regular stuff. We had some behavior things that came up and, uh, it just, it, it, things started to feel kind of normal, like several people had said. Um, we've been working really hard to try to bring more students back. And so we started the year with, with 14 students that were in cohort C coming four days, um, last, uh, I guess on Monday, we were up to 25 students. And I got a couple of emails today saying we're adding, I think, two more students to that. So, uh, we've been continually going through the process of identifying those students that, that need to come back, um, in order to, to learn. Um, and it's, it's exciting that we've been able to do that. Um, and it, it shows the commitment that the staff and, and the administration have to getting as many kids as we can possibly get in schools safely. Um, and so that's been great. Um, with that, we've had some, we've had some other growth that happened, some move-ins that happened through all this, which is, which is exciting but crazy. Um, we have worked with our classrooms right now, we've been at 14 desks in a classroom, I think we've done some rearranging to get to 15 desks that are six feet apart, uh, which gives us a little bit more capacity, which is a great thing. The collaboration that's been going on has been truly phenomenal. I think, uh, in all the schools, this has been happening. Um, but watching the teachers collaborate and do in different ways has been really neat. Uh, an example is, uh, a week and a half ago, I met with the seven special ed teachers 'cause we needed to rework their schedules. And we did it in person after school, we used the whiteboard, took pictures, um, and then we put it on a Google Doc and we collaborated more on Google Doc, 'cause we weren't able to finish during the hour meeting we had over the next week. And then today we met through Zoom, um, and finalized the plan, um, because, and that's kind of the, the way the world's working right now, we're, we're, we're using every way we can to, to share information and collaborate, um, but our, our staff were totally committed to, um, making sure we, we do everything we can to make this as smooth as possible. A couple of weeks ago, we had Halloween and, um, it was a, a Zoom day and, uh, everybody did their surprise costumes where they, they, they needed their pictures to start with and, um, they gave three clues and the kids had to guess what they wore. So, you know, in a very non-traditional Halloween on Zoom, but, um, another, it was a fun way just to do something different. They had to write out their, their, their clues and so it was pretty neat. Um, we had conferences this week, which was real exciting. I think, um, more than ever, our, our parents and our teachers needed a chance to have some one-on-one conversations about how their kids were doing. Um, I know as a parent with my own personal kids, um, it, it, it's hard to keep track of what's going on with my kids, what they've turned in, what they haven't. I know, um, I've heard several comments from the teachers today just about how, how beneficial those conversations were. So thank you to everybody that participated in those. Um, the next two weeks at the elementary school, uh, I, I thank you to everybody that came by today to pick up, um, their Chromebooks and, and supplies that they, they might not have had, closing on, if kids were in school on Monday, thought they'd be in school on Tuesday, so left things there. And obviously, then we weren't there on Tuesday. And so, um, in order to do remote learning, we kind of need those Chromebooks. And so thank you to everybody that was able to pick those up. If anybody wasn't able to pick them up today, um, just contact the office and we'll find a time for you to come by and get them. Um, the format that we're following is the same as what the elementary school followed when we were, um, closed for those two weeks in, in October. So like I said earlier, cohort A and cohort B are together with their homeroom teacher. Um, it allows for us to have those smaller Zoom meetings, which is a one, one perk of being fully remote. And, and they follow the, the same schedules they would have followed with the rotations to the board and subjects. Um, related arts, um, is the one thing where they do separate those cohorts, um, so we'll follow that same, you know, if they're in cohort A, they have live specials on Monday and Tuesday through Zoom and then asynchronous specials the other days and then vice versa for cohort B. Um, and then, uh, one thing that I really want to push right now is, is the snowflake drive. And so this, uh, if, if you've been in Douglas for any amount of time at all, um, this is a great thing that the school system has done in the community, um, to, um, gather gifts for, for Christmas, um, for, for families that are in need in our community. Um, and this year, it's a little bit different because, you know, with COVID, it, it makes, it creates, presents some challenges. So, um, we're doing a gift card collection instead of actually asking, um, for presents that are wrapped. Um, so it, it's actually kind of simpler for people to do, but I think it loses a little bit of the, the personal touch that we've always liked. Uh, but we still have some families that are in need, it's more so than ever with, um, everything that's going on. And so, um, I think because we've been in this weird hybrid model and now remote model, um, we have less participation than we've had in the past. So I, I would highly encourage everybody that's listening today, I'm glad we have 76 people on here, um, all you have to do is go out and get a gift card, um, and bring it by the school even while we're closed, you can drop them by the offices, we're still collecting those. Um, but we want to, we, we need to see how many gift cards we get before we can identify how many families we can support. But, um, it's, the more we get, the better, 'cause, uh, we, we'd love to make Christmas great for some families that, that are struggling right now. So, um, help us out with that. And that goes, I think, um, till, we, we've extended the deadline to December 4th for that. Uh, but that's what's going on at the elementary school.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. And if there aren't any questions for Mr. Bell or myself, that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, and thank you all, appreciate it.
I don't have a question, but can I just do a quick shout out to Mrs. Sosha? Um, it was really tough to not have the Veterans Day breakfast this year, that's just a highlight of the year for all of us, I think. Um, so even just putting the flags out, it was a nice touch. And I know that you sent something to, uh, family members that students had sort of picked out. It's, you know, this is just a tough time for everybody, I'm sure there are family members who look forward to that every year, so it really is fun to stay. Thank you for, thank you for finding a way, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we missed that day, that's for sure.
The Sosha did draw me a very nice card.
I did.
My Dunkin' Donuts, um, coffee. So it was, it was very nice, I have it hanging in my office, so thank you, Mrs. Sosha.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll be moving on to the school committee and subcommittee report, so Becky, you can unmute yourself.
This is the part that everybody looks forward to. And I don't have the date, shoot, hang on. Oh, I'm so sorry.
See if Courtney has that.
I did have it, but my computer shut, the other computer shut down.
I have the, um, did you want me to?
Sure.
Okay. So we have, um, oh, I'm sorry?
Just the date.
Okay, just the date?
Yeah.
11/12/2020 was warranted.
On 11/12/2020, I assigned 10 batches totaling $229,742.20. And that was all I saw in our packet. Nothing unusual.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to consent agenda, the November 4th, 2020 meeting minutes. And if anyone saw anything or didn't see anything? Looking for a motion?
I didn't see anything, I always wait for Courtney to, because she always finds the stuff.
No, it's all set, all set.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 4th, 2020, school committee.
Motion made by Kelly. Second by Heather, and left to do a roll call vote.
Becky Tarnia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye, thank you. Moving on to the school business and operations manager's report.
Okay, um, so we had, I had sent along with your packet, um, a delineation of what was spent or ordered, um, from the FY 2021, 21, um, school reopening grant, that's a CARES grant. So I can just kind of highlight, um, some items here that were, we were very appreciative to get. We ordered 100 iPads for the primary school, along with the iPad cases, which is very important, 60 MacBooks for teachers, um, six Dell laptops, um, we have cha- eight charging cards for Chromebooks, we have webcams for the high school, um, Zoom online description, subscription, online curriculum program from Edgenuity and also a digital library platform. Uh, we also received some PPA, uh, safety training on the N95 mask, 'cause that's required to actually wear or use an N95 mask. We had some training for school reopening. And we also did an egress evaluation, um, from Genesco Design, um, on the high school for COVID. Uh, with re-, uh, with regard to other things having to do with facilities and signs, we did receive, get some signs for sidewalks, athletics, on lawn. Uh, we did purchase some air purifiers for the school district, on just a few, out of this particular grant, some filters, um, COVID floor graphics, um, the plexiglass barriers that you see throughout the school district. We did get a few of the backpack, um, fogger sprayers, uh, which we're doing the, you know, we have the, the cleaning, the sanitizing, the disinfecting, um, so that's then very, very, very useful. Um, sanitizers and dispensers that you see all throughout the school buildings, and we got a lot of that. Um, voice amplification, um, let's see, three Verizon hotspots that were needed, 45 USB document cameras that, um, are going to be very useful, especially now that we're back on remote, I think that'll be particularly useful. Um, LCD projector for the primary school, then received another, we did get another backpack, um, fogger sprayer, and also 100 Dell, um, Chromebooks for the high school and 21 wireless access points, wireless access points for the school district. Uh, we do have, um, just over $4,000 left to spend in the grant. So as far as this particular grant, the Fund Code 102, the school reopening grant, the original amount was $272,925. And that was based on $225 per student. But, and I'm trying to see how to explain this. We also, yeah, government works in mysterious ways sometimes, especially during COVID. Uh, we also received a technology grant, the amount of $48,061. Then the state, um, DESE had this, um, very helpful program in order to purchase Chromebooks on behalf of school districts. So we did put in for 260 Chromebooks. And what we thought was gonna happen is that, 'cause we had the grant for $48,061, that, you know, we ordered them, but then we would receive the invoice and pay it directly from the grant that we had received. But what they did, um, they thought that it was easier to do, um, they actually, uh, used the grant, $48,061 for a good portion of the grants and basically kind of eliminated the grant. So we never did really receive it. We did get our Chromebooks though, and they took care of it on the state level. Then a balance of $19,149, um, for the $67,210 total amount for the 260 Chromebooks, was paid also from the, um, reopening grant, because you were allowed to pay a portion from, um, the other grants as well, kind of a matching portion, actually. So we're very happy to be able to have been able to take care of a lot of our PBE needs and sanitizing, cleaning, um, disinfecting and, um, you know, a, a lot of things to assist the teachers during, for their remote learning, uh, training for the first 10 days, uh, as well, prior to starting school. So we did find that this grant was extremely helpful in, um, being able to get through those, these first few months and, uh, we're very happy that we did receive it. I think it would've been very difficult for us if we had not received it. And, uh, Donna does have some idea, um, for the, the additional 4,000. Um, all of the funds had to be spent and all goods received by December 30th. So I want to thank, um, particularly Donna and Jeff, being very diligent and working very hard to work on, you know, getting some very, uh, good ideas of this funding could best serve our school district, and also working very hard to quickly process things so we can get the goods and services in. As you're, you're probably aware, um, these days, whether it be, you know, at schools or probably even at home for everyone, it isn't that easy to get everything you used to run out and get. So, um, it worked out very, very well and I'm very, very pleased. But that being said, uh, one other thing I want to say is that it took a, quite a while, even though they had sent us a letter saying that we were going to be receiving, um, the grant, the funds, it took us a long time to get the letter of approval. I'm sure you understand that DESE is dealing with a, a lot of things. I mean, they're really, really, very, very overwhelmed there. So it did take quite some time. So there was a period of time that we did have to pay for things out of school choice or the general fund budget, um, knowing that it was coming. Of course, we waited for the giant purchases until the end after, after it was, um, approved, 'cause we didn't want to put ourselves too much out on a limb. But we did receive that and, um, so I do have, after we get through this, I do have some transfers I'll be going over, some reclassifications I'll be going over and that gets the grant all copasthetic and all in line. But before I move on, um, to that, I was wondering if anybody had any questions on the grant or the use of the expenditures? Either grant, the one that we really did never get, but we did get the Chromebooks. Does anyone have any questions on either of those grants? Okay, but we really do appreciate the funding. And this came from the federal government as a pass-through, um, through the state. And there are some reporting requirements as well. So the next thing I have for you this evening is, um, FY 2021 reclassifications number one. And this is entirely the reclassifications, um, to get everything moved into, um, into the grant. Jean has set up the grant, set up the accounts, and basically that's what we're doing. And, um, just to explain why it's only for $101,831, is there anything that you see on my, um, sheet delineating everything for the grant? Anything that's not paid? When the invoice comes in, now that the grant is set up, we will be able to pay that directly from the grant. So that's what we'll do, so there won't be any necessary, um, reclassifications for those. Does anyone have any questions on the reclasses?
Forty-one people stayed on to watch you do that, Courtney.
Yeah. Well, it's good for those people to hear though, what, you know, this funding is, um, doing for our school district and in-school and remote learning and all the wonderful technology and things that we did, we're able to get, um, and the other things too that we need to go through this, uh, difficult year with COVID. So we, we really are very, very appreciative of, of having that grant.
We are.
So looking for a motion? Anyone? Anyone?
I make a motion that we approve the reclassification number one. Is that good enough, Courtney?
On the date?
Oh, sorry, I closed out the thing too quickly. On the November 18, 2020.
Motion made by Heather. Second by Julie. Roll call vote.
Becky Tarnia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I was actually able to get, 'cause things are starting to get a little bit, I actually shouldn't even finish the sentence, back to normal. So I'm able to get back to a lot of, you know, my, my regular, my regular stuff, so that's really, really fantastic. So, this is the first, um, reclassifications with regard to the FY 21 budget. It's basically moving things around, um, I would say about half of it towards the bottom there, all of the library ones, that is just a change from a one, which means regular ed, to an eight, which means undistributed. That's all that is. DESE code, um, you know, chart of accounts and program coding. So that's all those are, um. And some of it, I think the, most of the top ones were, as you know, we didn't have a budget for quite a while. We had the 112, I think there was some confusion, 'cause we didn't have a budget yet, so we're straightening out, so some things were paid out of school choice, but I actually ended up having it in the, um, in the general fund budget. So does anybody have any questions on, um, anything on the reclassification?
I'll be looking for a motion.
Go ahead, Heather.
I'll make a motion that we approve the FY 20 reclassification number two dated November 18, 2020.
Motion made by Heather.
Second.
Second by Kelly, roll call vote.
Becky Tarnia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye, thank you.
Okay, so I was going to have transfers as well, um, but I didn't get to them today, but we're in, I'm in really, really good shape with regard to getting everything caught up. We will be, um, uh, Ellen is putting in all of the, um, encumbrances for the salaries and as you know, that's about 84% of the budget. So I want to have the transfers for you very shortly and also a So I want to have the transfers for you very shortly and also a general fund budget report. Because, you know, we, now that we have everything under the munis, get these reclasses done, we'll have some transfers and you know, we won't be too, too far behind then. And I am still working, I am working on preparing the FY 22 preliminary budget as well. So we'll have that for you. I'm hoping, I know Paul is hoping for sometime in December. Okay, and that's all I, I have at this time.
Thank you. So we'll be moving on if topics not anticipated. If anyone has one, you can raise your hand. Or throw something up in the chat. Don't see anything. So we do need executive session and we need to invite Dr. Vieira into it. And it's to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detriment to bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body and to conduct collective bargaining.
And not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session. So we will need to enter open session. So I'll be looking for a motion for that.
I move that we enter executive session.
Motion made by Becky.
Second.
Second by Kelly in a roll call vote.
Becky Charnia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. And thank you, everyone. And please have a safe holiday.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.